Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, September 6, 2018. Please rise and join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Mr. Mansour, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Brown, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Yoncho, Mr. Horsia, our planner, Mr. Lloyd. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any changes that anyone has?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda.
Support. Motion by Mr. Banderski, that was supported by Mr. Yoncho. Vote is in order, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Next would be approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 7, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the meeting minutes of June 7 and found everything to be in order, therefore I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 7, 2018.
Any other corrections or notes from anyone else in the planning commission? There's a motion by Mr. Banderski.
Support.
Support by Mr. Yoncho again. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment, and this is for anything that we don't have a public hearing on. We do have a public hearing scheduled this evening for special land use for Subaru, but if you're here to address the planning commission, anything other than that, now would be the time. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the planning commission? No, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up to the planning commission. Uh, let's see, in our packets we had, actually I think there were three, planning and zoning news. Got lots of reading to do, keep up with things. Any other correspondence? Normally we'd go into old business, no old business this evening, that brings us to new business, special land use 18-003. As, uh, we also will be taking, potentially taking action on a site plan related to that special land use this evening as well, this is for Subaru.
Mr. Chairman, Pat Parker, Simon and Figurn Parker, 5206 Gateway, I'm the attorney for Sarah Works and Sarah Automotive on these matters. Joe Sarah apologizes he couldn't be here tonight due to longstanding business trip, that he did not want to adjourn this meeting, they're anxious to move forward on this. I'm going to speak on the issue of the special land use expansion. Jim Morgan is here with us, he's going to answer questions and walk you through the site plan. On the special land use expansion, the location has had a special land use granted since it was built some years ago, it's been expanded one time, it still meets the zoning requirements, it still meets all of the general requirements of the special land use provisions of the Grand Blank Township ordinance, it meets the specific requirements, uh, there's no residential around it, there is a request by Subaru to expand certain of the operations of the dealership, which is why we're here. Subaru's been, is a good brand, it's been a good brand for Joe and has done well across the country, and they're requiring us to have more space, and so that's why we're here tonight. Nothing has changed with regard to its status as a special land use under your ordinance, it's just that we're expanding the size a little bit, and we are requesting that the special land use status be also expanded. Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Lloyd, do you want to give us an overview of anything, and the reason that we're here for the special land use, where that comes from, I guess?
Sure thing, the, um, um, as the applicant's representative indicated, this has had a special land use for some time. The ordinance does in fact require that if there's an expansion of a special land use, that the planning commission has to take a look at it, in other words, the ordinance is written in a way that says, any expansion or amendments to that special land use have to go through the same process they did to get the original approval. And so we take a look at whether or not this expansion is going to create any impacts beyond what's already been analyzed, um, everything is and will continue to be contained on the site, um, so we've looked at it from that standpoint, um, the additional traffic and/or vehicular movement on or around the site is negligible, um, so we're not concerned about that either, didn't trigger any of those requirements for review, um, and this is a simple straightforward request, um, and as you noted, and you may note, and I don't want to jump ahead, but there was a requirement for additional information being provided with regards to photometric information, and so that's been provided, we have taken a look at that, um, if there's any questions about either that or anything on the site plan, I'm here to help answer them, and I know that the applicant's well represented, and they've got folks here as well.
So this project came before the site plan review committee for, and was granted preliminary site plan approval, we only had three conditions, uh, one was to come here and obtain a special land use permit, uh, provide an updated photometric plan, because we weren't sure what the impact was for any changes to the lighting, and then, um, we just requested to provide photographs or color rendering of the existing building, just to kind of refresh our memory, those that haven't been by there in a while, so. Any questions from planning commission?
No.
Making this too easy.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment to begin with, uh, I think this is a good thing, uh, that Subaru is wanting to expand their footprint in that particular facility, so I look at it as, look at it as good news, that things are being successful, and I'm glad to see what's going on.
So if anyone would like to make a motion regarding the special land use only, we'll take that, and then we'll have a little, maybe a little bit discussion about the site plan, and can do that question. Yes, thank you. We do have a requirement to have a public hearing, so I will open that up. This time, anyone that would like to address the planning commission regarding this project? Special land use? Close the public hearing, bring it back up to the planning commission, thank you, Mr. Banderski. So if anyone on the planning commission would like to make a motion regarding the...
I would like to make a motion to approve the special land use for the expansion of the existing use as an automobile dealership and servicing center for Subaru on this, uh, um, special land use 18-003.
Support. Motion by Mr. Yoncho, support by Mr. Mansour, any further discussion? Not, the vote is in order, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero, thank you. So, I think what we'd like to do is take a look at the site plan and, uh, see if we're able to grant final site plan at this committee. Mr. Lloyd, did you have a chance to take a look at the photometric plan?
I did, um, and, you know, I was, I discovered a few things that, you know, frankly, I don't know if we all were aware of it, but as I was looking at that, looking to try to require them to get down to zero at the property line, we started to realize that the way that the ordinance is actually written, that's only if and when they're adjacent to residential properties, so as we, and they worked very hard to, uh, work towards resolving that, it was clear that it wasn't going to happen. And, and what we're really looking at from a change standpoint is only on, if you're looking at your plan, the, the left and right, if you will, of the building, as you're looking at the building, because that's the only area that's expanding or that's changing anything with regards to lighting, and all they're doing there is taking the light packs off the existing exterior walls, building that new extension, and then just putting those same light packs right back on the exterior again, so there's really no change. And, and those areas on either side of the building that I referenced, um, are all within, you know, commercial properties, matter of fact, it's all contained on the, on the same property all the way down to zero.
It appears that the perimeter light values are pretty much what they were before, you got a little brighter in the space in between the two buildings, um, there was, I think, discussion at the site plan level, you thought you might have to move one of the light poles that were on, I guess I would call it south side, but I'm not sure, is, is that part of the...
We re-verified that that is not, we can build the building without taking that down or relocating.
Okay, so... So no light poles are being changed? Just building...
Mr. Chairman, could you please come up and give your name and address?
Uh, Jim Morgan, Morgan Construction Company, uh, 5454 Gateway Center, Suite C, Flint, Michigan, 48507.
Is it the same?
Uh, yeah, we are not changing any light poles, uh, as Mr. Lloyd had said, we are only relocating the existing wall packs to the, to the new wall, and that's really, that's along the north wall, which faces the, uh, the pre-owned building next door.
Thank you.
Any other comments from planning commission on the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions of a practical nature, um, so you, you're adding five service bays?
Correct.
To five existing service bays?
Correct, that's a requirement from Subaru.
But the service bays are going to be a lot smaller than the existing service bays, it appears.
Uh, they are going to be a little bit smaller and, uh, but we're using in-ground hoist to minimize, to allow us to have closer bays.
So there's, I mean, it'll meet ocean requirements and everything else as far as we're...
Yes, it will.
Automobiles. And then, secondly, um, at the unload-unload space on the s- north side of the building, what size trucks typically deliver product?
Uh, more small, like box truck type trucks.
Okay, because it doesn't have much room to, to back into that space.
Well, and that's actually the same size space that's there for loading-unloading right now, um...
Right, but now you have to swing around, uh, the, the new construction and the new landscape, which...
Well, as part of the construction, we've actually, we're shifting that drive that goes through there now, just a little bit north, uh, so that we have a, still have a full 26-foot access drive down through there. And then putting all new curbs and coming out of the bays on the, uh, from the service bays, uh, we have landscape islands, which will help to protect and direct that traffic so that somebody backing out of a service bay won't be backing into, or again, also in the, in the, where the service, uh, where the loading and unloading is, uh, that'll also be out of the way of the, of the traffic.
Anyone else from planning commission, have any comments? Questions, concerns? If not, I guess, uh, Mr. Lloyd, did you have anything?
Nope, sure.
And I guess a motion would be in order for site plan 1037 for Subaru for final site plan.
Chairman, um, I'm prepared to make a motion on site plan review number 1037 of Subaru, Subaru Edition, for the final site plan review approval.
Second.
So there's a motion by Mr. Brown, support by Mr. Banderski, I'm assuming that's approval as presented?
As presented, I'm sorry, thank you.
There are no changes that you...
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was just a couple of minor things they've already taken care of, so. Any other discussion? Not, the vote is in order, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item on our agenda is election of officers. Mr. Johnson is not here.
Oh, yeah, we seem wide open for opportunities to serve.
So if anyone would like to nominate Mr. Johnson, I mean, well, but he's been, uh, been our vice chair for a few years, and if anyone else is interested in the position, or...
I would, uh, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make some nomination of officers. First of all, for our chairman, I would recommend and nominate our current chairman to that position, and I would also nominate our current vice chair to that secondary position, and then secretary lastly, the same thing. All three have done a magnificent job.
Any other discussions, or anybody wants to throw their hat into the ring?
A comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Banderski.
We should know the duration of the current officers, in terms of, on the planning commission, do you know what those are, Mr. Lloyd?
I don't off the top of my head, but I'm happy to track that down. Is there something about it, you, anything in particular I can find?
Well, if, if one of the three nominated officers has one year, uh, remaining in that office, is it appropriate to nominate that person?
Yeah, this, this election of officers is for this, for a one-year timeframe, so...
Well, then I presume we're all here for one year.
Well, let me...
Same question.
There's a difference here, one is you get appointed for a two-year period, isn't that right, you guys get two years?
Yes.
And then every year, the commission goes through the process of, of electing officers each year, and that's due right now. We didn't do it at the last meeting or two because we didn't have them?
Typically, it's just, it's in the fall usually, September, October, that we've, that we've done it, I think. So what I think I'd like to do is go by indi- individual, um, because I think I'll have to turn this over to the secretary for me not to vote for, not, yeah, for the election of the chairman. So let's, uh...
We start there?
Sure.
Motion's been made for Mr. Gellings to remain as chairman.
He accepts.
He accepts, so, well, second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes six to zero.
Thank you for your wonderful job. All right, let's go, go to, uh, nomination for Mr. Johnson to remain as vice chair for the next year?
Yes.
Like, uh, vote is in order, all those in favor signal by saying, whoop, I'm sorry, gosh, I'm getting ahead of myself here. There was a motion by Mr. Brown.
Support.
Support by Mr. Yoncho.
Has Mr. Johnson indicated that he, any opposition to remaining as vice president?
By his untimely absence, no.
Silence is...
Joe has been commuting from northern location, and, uh, he's, he was here for our last site plan review, and we, I think he's aware that this was on the table and didn't express any concern, so. But I guess if he does come back, then we can always take it up again after that.
You can.
Okay, we were at the point of taking a vote regarding re, uh, reappointment of Mr. Johnson to vice chair. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero. And that, and that leads us to, there was a motion by Mr. Brown to reelect Mr. Banderski as our secretary, any support for that?
Lord?
By Mr. Horsia?
Discussion.
Pardon me?
Discussion. So I've got the, um, website up for the planning commission, and, uh, maybe there's a mis- mistake here, but, uh, the term for Mr. Banderski, I'm sure this is wrong, goes through July 31, 2018, so that probably needs to be updated.
Thank you.
But, uh, but, but Mr. Gellings, uh, July 31, 2019, and, um, uh, Mr. Johnson is through July 31, 2020, so, um, just, just so we know that.
Thanks for the information.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we, we had the motion by Mr. Brown, support by Mr. Horsia, to reelect Mr. Banderski as our secretary, a vote is in order, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero, thank you, you've been doing a great job, nobody else wants the job either, so.
But, but my term has expired.
His term's expired a month and a half ago, so we'll...
You must have been...
We'll have to fix that.
Mark's going to find out on that.
Take care of everything, rebound.
So that just means you don't get paid for tonight.
And we're going to need that checkback for last year.
But that raises a point, I think that, and I go to what the Mr. Mansour, our trustee here, I think last year, or the year before, whenever it was surfaced, it went before the township board, they made the approvals, but it, word didn't come back to us. We weren't even aware it was on the agenda.
Okay.
And so, you know, I'd ask that there be a process here to, when that comes up, that in hi- in hindsight, that we be notified that...
Sure.
The term is now gone, you know, been increased by X amount.
I guess for those of you that aren't aware, Mr. Goldie has made a request not to be reappointed, the planning commission, if you know.
Yes, I was aware of that.
So I will make a, a note with the, uh, the board to, uh, notify people of terms, so we keep that in front of everyone, their term of office.
So, the, the next item on here talks about appointment of zoning board of appeals member, is that within our prerogative, or is that the township board, I think?
I believe it's the township board.
That's what I thought.
Well, for whatever reason, it's come through here before, maybe, uh, if nothing else, we could just reference some level of support from the planning commission, it's not necessary.
Well, Mr. Brown does a great job.
Great job.
I'd like to see him stay here, so.
I'm good with that.
Well, let me turn that into a motion that...
I'm not sure that we...
Oh, maybe it might be a motion of resolution.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I move that the planning commission endorse Mr. Brown for his continuance on the board of zoning appeals.
Support.
Zoning board appeals to the planning commission, right?
Yes, correct.
Support.
Thank you. Got a motion by Mr. Banderski, uh, to show the planning commission support for Mr. Brown and support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven zero, thank you for that. Next?
Well, actually, I think it might be six zero, because I, I couldn't vote.
Oh, that's true, thank you. I'm out of my game today, I guess. Next item on our agenda is 2019 works program, Mr. Lloyd?
All right, well, folks, I hope that you all had a chance to at least look at the outline, if you will, that I put together, um, see a couple of you have it out, but it, uh, I sent it out, it looks like this. I know that we haven't had much of a discussion about this, so this is really just our sort of maiden voyage at talking about this, so I don't, you know, want to, I don't want you to expect that we're going to have a lot of, of things resolved and, and, uh, you know, issues and responsibilities identified, but what I, what I want to begin to do is to have the, the dialogue about this, because, you know, we are going to have, and we do have, I know I have, quite a bit of work ahead of me on my plate, and, and I'm going to need your help, and, um, you know, that, that help is, um, both, um, I think, of responsibility, of course, but also, you know, one where I don't have the horses to drive all the things, so I'm going to need this group or some subgroups to, you know, bounce ideas off, and, you know, once I take, uh, direction and, and work to prepare draft documents to the extent that I'll be doing that for you, um, I want to make sure that, you know, I've got a subgroup or something to help with some of that, and, um, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we can have some dialogue to start to begin to think about interests that any of you might have to serve on, any particular committee or whatever, and, um, also areas of expertise that, that might really be helpful. I can tell you that we have, I'll call, I'll put it into four categories, if you will, and I did prepare what I think is a real simple diagram for that, and I'll just pop it up here real quick for you, um, you'll indulge me, you'll see, we got four basic areas here that we'll be working within, and this is just the starting point, like I said, don't think for a moment that this is intended to be absolute. The top left says advanced planning, this is long-term planning, master plan work, so, you know, that's a, an exercise and an effort in itself, and that's going to take quite a long time, it's, it's what I've called, or it's been deemed or termed advanced or long-term planning, um, it's a document that we're going to put together that's going to help us deal with long-term visioning and the, and the effort of master planning that I think you all know. We did talk about master planning a little bit about, meh, seven, well, about eight months ago now, um, and as a result of that conversation, you know, I know there was a lot of excitement, from my standpoint, there was a lot of enthusiasm, um, and I'd gotten on board, and the issue that we had frankly was, we, I think the presentation that we might have had from the planners was a little bit ahead of our budgeting efforts because we really didn't have money budgeted, and that hasn't happened yet this year, um, but what has happened is that we prepared and we budgeted for next year. The amount of money that we have for this year, uh, we got about $30,000 in the, in the planning, uh, budget for the remainder of this year. I don't know to what extent we'll be able to get going with master planning and how much of that we might utilize between now and the end of this, um, calendar year, but whatever that might be would, would be part of, of the overall cost for the project. The budget that I have in for next year includes $40,000 for, uh, master planning, um, 30 of that will come from the building depart, or excuse me, from the planning department tend, from, from the building arena, so we do have, uh, some different funding sources to help with that. So that is what I put forward for this, um, next year's budget. So all in all, if you put all those numbers together, right now, you know, we, we have $40,000 for next year, $30,000, um, for the remainder of this year, but that $30,000 is just available money, it has not been allocated or budgeted for master planning. The budget for next year, we'll allocate it specifically for that, this year it's simply in a budget line item for planning, it doesn't specify what it's to be used for, I'm just letting you know there is money in the budget. And then, if you look at this, the blue area...
Excuse me, Mr. Lloyd?
Into the area, oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, so in terms of the money that's ear, I would say earmarked, but at least available for the master plan, do we have some kind of an idea of how that money might be spent before the end of the year, because I think we, at one point, we kind of recognized that a full-blown redo of the master plan is a, you know, 50, 60, $70,000 undertaking, uh, and, um, you know, here we are sitting at the beginning of September, and I'm just wondering if we, if you've had some thought about, you know, how that money might be used the rest of the year?
I, I do, and, and we haven't, we haven't had the chance to talk about that, but this is just thoughts that I've had exclusive of, of anybody, and so my expectation was that this discussion tonight would be the beginning of, of conveying that, so it's timely and an appropriate question.
A question too, when you say next year's budget, what's, this fiscal year starts October?
January.
January, okay.
First, yes.
And then, can money that's available for this fiscal year roll over into next fiscal year?
It could, if that's budgeted that way, it hasn't been, it's not proposed right now, but it can be, sure, just has to be requested that way, and that hasn't happened. What we have done is requested, as I mentioned, the $40,000 for the following year. And, if I might, the idea that I have is that we would go out for an RFP for the, um, master plan. You know, I think that's only fair, it's the appropriate way to go, I, I don't think we need to spend $80,000 for a master plan, I think that what, um, you know, there's, there's a variety of ways to go, the quality of, of master planning right now is high, there's a lot of great firms out there that can provide excellent service, um, I think we owe it to ourselves and the community to go make sure that we're getting, uh, the best deal that we can.
And then, Mr. Lloyd, and...
You know, I'm, I'm glad we're, we're moving forward in this, because I think everyone on the planning commission appreciates the importance of the overall master plan and keeping it updated, as well as we stay current with what the requirements are, and if I'm correct in this, hell, you guys, if I'm wrong, is that, um, state statute has every municipality a requirement that they update their master plan every five years, am I correct?
That's correct.
And what, what's good about this is that we're... And what, what's good about this is that we're gonna be in that timeframe.
Oh, we're, we're...
Which means precisely, what, what I'm getting at is that you wanna be proud of the fact that we're gonna get this done in advance, and that's what I like.
The...
Excuse me, one more comment about that, if I may. So, in terms of the, the cost of the master plan, I think that the, you know, commission should consider what we're gonna be spending the money on in prior years before we had a director of planning. It was a normal thing to farm out the entire business of, of creating that plan with our outside services. As we go forward here, I think we ought to be considerate of, you know, what elements of the plan we ought to be taking out for bid and, and what portions of that we can kind of do in-house. Thank you.
Again, another great point. I, I think, you know, again, this is the beginning of these discussions. Those are the kinds of things that I, I would hope and expect that we would be getting into.
What do, what do you see as needing the most help with? Is it data gathering, or?
Yeah, there's gonna be graphics, for sure, graphics, data collection, you know, the, the organization of the document. I've got that part covered, the, the layout, all of those kinds of things, fundamental pieces, ensuring the elements are consistent between each other, the, that, that quality control part is, is easily handled by me. But we will need, you know, considerable amount of assistance, you know, I mean, there'll be components of it that no doubt I'll be able to either write and/or provide the, the data or information on, but, you know, my expectation is that we would need and rely upon a consultant to do, you know, a heck of a lot of that work.
How do we quantify, I guess, what it is that you need in order to get someone to put a number to it?
I will bring you a worksheet that'll show you how I've come up with numbers based on my experience of dealing with proposals for master planning, and I'll present that to you when we, you know, begin these kinds of discussions in earnest. What, what I'd like to do is, let's say, our next meeting, we're gonna have a conversation about this master planning. I'd like to put out an agenda, give you guys an opportunity to review the things that we would be talking about in advance, and then have that dialogue and get the feedback I need from you, give you an idea of how we're intending to proceed, and get what I would hope would be feedback from you to, to fine-tune things, to get it directed. Hopefully, it wouldn't be so far off that it needs to be thrown out, started over, but that you'd be facilitating the fine-tuning to get things buttoned down. We'll form a committee, and I would expect and, and need assistance from somebody from this group and maybe a couple more, you know, folks from the administration, but to be part of the RFP review committee, of course, when that comes, and the selection committee. So, you know, there'll be, you know, that series of work and exercises. I'm gonna put a, an idea out there that isn't firm, but it's a thought based on some, some feedback and some research that I've been doing. One of the things that I have seen historically is that consultants come in and spend a great deal of time on the charrettes, the, you know, the public engagement component of, and it's hugely important, without question. It's one of the biggest and most important components of it. But there's other ways to go too, with regards to survey efforts and things of that nature that, that have been discovered to be pretty effective, and then can help to guide the efforts that the master planning exercise will undertake. So you can, you, you don't have to do all of your survey work in the, in the confines of master planning. You can do your survey work and get good information from folks on interests they might have, things they might wanna see here, or development areas that they might have interest in. And we don't need to funnel them through a land use or master planning exercise to get that feedback and be a little more organic, that we're getting, you know, just ideas that folks might have, things that they want. Put it into a, you know, format that gives us the kind of results that are gonna tell us this is what the Grand Blank Township residents are looking to have. Because I don't care how many times I've conducted them and how good of a job we do, as a consultant, I'll tell you, we, we have, we always came up short with regards to, we just never got the numbers we wanted. We might get ten or fifteen or twenty people showing, it's like, gosh darn, but we need 6,000 people responding to our questions, not, not sixteen, not sixty. So we've got to find a better way, and I think I have some good ideas on that that I would like to explore with you, give you some suggestions, walk through some of these things, and see if you agree. And if so, then that would be an approach that we could begin and start to take, but this whole thing is gonna need to be cobbled together with your assistance and so that we can put together a proposal, a program that makes sense to everybody, and one that everybody supports, and that then we begin the process of moving that forward and starting the work of putting together a new master plan. It, it is gonna be a, a pretty significant undertaking. I would expect it'll take us, you know, through 2019, for the most part, you know, it's gonna take a while.
For those of us who've participated in this over the years, I know Mr. Gellings and I have, and I think Ms. Calder as well, you know, I think we did a great job. I think our current master plan can stand the test of time.
Yeah.
But things have changed, certainly. Maybe we should take a look at, look at different kinds of media in terms of, you said you wouldn't wanna have a group here and have only twelve or fifteen people or so, and I remember when we did it, which has been quite a long time, we had large turnout. But times have changed, and the way you communicate have also significantly changed. I think we need to really see how we can utilize the new methods of communication to gather information from our residents, because I think it's critically important that we do that. I'm really proud of the, of the current master plan that was put together. I think we, we spent a lot of time, a lot of good effort, and as I said, I'm not trying to speak for Ms. Calder and Mr. Gellings, but I'm pretty proud of the, the final product that we did several years ago, but we can do better.
Well, you, you should be proud. That's a good document.
But also, we have to get, and as I'm repeating myself, times have changed. We've got to utilize the tools at our disposal to get to our residents in maybe different fashion.
Yeah, and, and we've become a little more sophisticated in regards to how, and frankly, why and when we wanna use the master plan, you know, it doesn't, you know, how often do we refer to it here? We, we don't often, you know, as far as its relationship to a project, you know, just, it doesn't, we, we make... I suppose in some ways, maybe the commission makes the assumption, or maybe you all know all the details of the master plan, but, you know, the fact is, is that, you know, it's not an integral part of, of a motion or what we're doing, and, and we can talk about that too, because there, there is some benefit and there's an upside to identifying and pointing out through the approval, or at least in the analysis, how the approval of that project facilitates the implementation of the...
Yeah, I think we look to it for the overall guidance, especially zoning requests and...
Right, sure, rezonings and stuff.
Well, we did that precisely for the technology village area, and, and we, we had the vision, obviously, to do that, and I think, so that is encompassed into the master plan, at least in that particular project.
Right.
Two comments, if I would, building on what Mr. Brown said, in talking about revisions as we've done, and it's a good plan, and I hear you keep saying nu nu. Is it nu nu, or is it a revised?
Well, it'll be, it'll be an updated plan. I mean, everything you ever do, essentially, I mean, you really, you know, the bones of it'll...
But terminology in, in discussions, your discussions with general public would be...
Comprehensive update.
It's, you know, their, their vision of nu is different than what our vision is.
Yeah, and we can make sure we get our speaking points and terminology correct, that we're all speaking from the same place.
My second comment is, two, three years ago, we as a commission spent a lot of time recording what we thought, thought, work that needed to be done, and prioritize that, and are you using that as a basis for this work program?
Not for the work program, no. I'll revisit that, but this work program at this time is, is essentially yours. I'm, what I wanna be able to do, if we're off the master plan discussion, I'll move on to that. All, all I wanna be able to do is find out if this group is interested in, in doing something along those lines, putting a quote-unquote work program together, whatever else you might wanna call it, that...
Well, I would, I would call what we did kind of a work program. You know, it, it blended into, you know, changes to the master plan or trying to do that.
Okay, right.
It was more than just trying to do it for the master plan.
I think I know what document you're talking about. It was like a, a whole list of objectives, basically, and then we had like one year, two year long term.
Okay.
The problem is, we created this and stuck it in the file someplace.
And, and that's what I don't wanna do. What, what I wanna make sure we do, and thank you for pointing that, because that's unfortunately what happens. What I wanna do is, is what you've done, and I'll revisit that if you'd like. I'll take a look at that. You, you guys can let me use your, the ideas from before. Some of you, or at least one of you did, in fact, thank you very much, send me your list of issues, and I appreciate that. And, and I can, and I, my intention would be to use that to kind of line them out, and then let this group identify what those priorities are. If you've already done that, and this group is asking that I use that as a foundation and a basis, I'm happy to do.
We should review it.
Sure, makes great sense. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel.
See what still makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, if I can just modify Mr. Gelling's comment.
Yeah.
We didn't just stick it in a closet. Most of the items we talked about required money.
That's true.
To do, and there, and the money wasn't available.
And that's why we, and how we'll prioritize things. If we don't have the money, it, it won't be on the, it won't be the top two things. We're gonna put things on that to-do list that we can to-do, not things that we have to wait for. But we'll keep those things we have to wait for, and we'll work towards that on a budgeting effort in, in a group setting and identify that, and if it gets risen to the top of the priority list, if I can't get my way from a budget request standpoint, I'll take a few of you with me.
Well, all I'm trying to point out is, a lot of work was done.
Yeah, that's great.
We gave it a lot of time and effort, and we were stymied, because two, three years ago, the township didn't have any master...
Okay, I, I will gladly find that. Any idea of about how long ago that happened?
I looked it up. I think it was 2013, actually, five years ago.
At a commission meeting, was it an agenda item, when you finalized it?
Yeah.
I could find that, okay.
I just wanted to make, I wanted to make a point kind of relevant to this discussion this time. I think when, if we're gonna be setting not just goals, but like action items, they should be specific and sort of measurable, because that list that I think I was referring to when I sent you the memo, if you look at it, it has a lot of things that say encourage this, or promote this, or, you know, things of that sort, which, you know, how do you measure that, and what exactly does that mean? I'd like to see something specific like, you know, reviewed design standards, or, you know.
And I...
You could make a quick call to Jill, and she could give that to you faster.
Oh, absolutely.
You could look it up.
You bet. Thank you for raising that, and I'm happy to do that. So, I appreciate what you're saying. And what we will do is exactly that. If you, if, just to give you an idea, let's say we decided we were gonna take on medical marijuana. It's on the top of the future projects list. That would be an item that, you know, we would have a committee, and we would have, you know, two or three of the planning commissioners participating in that, along with myself, or whomever else, you know, I may need to, to utilize, or you may need to utilize, and then we would be working on that, and we would gain ground on that. We would report to the Planning Commission each time that we had something to report on, and that project would get completed, and we would bring a finished, well, a draft to the commission for their review and consideration, prior to moving an item on for, you know, consideration by the full board. So that's how those will evolve. There'll be steps associated with each of these projects, and so there'll be measurable moments, if you will, and those will need to be identified by the groups. I, I realize coming in here that, wow, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna come in here and, and reinvent the wheel. I appreciate your bringing the point out that you've done this work before. I expected something along those lines. I just didn't have my hands on it, and I really wanted to find out if this was something that, I mean, just from myself to you, to find out if this commission was interested in, in, in working that way, because, you know, not every commission either has to or, or does, and so this will require, you know, a little bit of extra work and some specific work from, from some of you who would end up being on a committee, and we can create those as time goes on, but I don't wanna have eight different things that we're working on, you guys. I, I need two or three in a year. There's gonna be plenty of other stuff coming in from the outside that's coming our way, but, you know, the master plan's a major project, and if we're taking on a zoning ordinance rewrite or an issue with zoning ordinance that a committee's working on, that in itself, that's a, that's a considerable amount of work for your director and, and this commission.
Excuse me, Chairman Gelling? So, I appreciate the thought starters that Director Lloyd has on the, on these pages, and I think that especially some of the ones in the future project list are certainly topics that we ought to weigh in, because they'll tie into the master plan, what we're gonna do about miracle marijuana, you know, solar, wind, energy, that kind of thing. One thing that's not on here that I wanna make sure is addressed somehow, and maybe it's kind of in the wireless, but the whole broadband, having that capability in the, in the township, what that might look like to us, that's got a lot of, it's got a lot of attention in other, in other counties and other communities. So, so some of these things in the future project list, I think, kind of, you know, if we have some thoughts on them, they can feed their way into the master plan, as opposed to like a tree ordinance, for me, is kind of a separate, separate discussion.
So I presume, sir, you're looking for some ideas of some other things we might have some interest in?
Yeah, things that you, as a, yes, absolutely.
Well, I guess one thing I've got a question about is, we see site plans that come in, and some of those don't have enough room to put the required number of trees, so there's a tree fund. Have we ever spent any of that money to plant a single tree yet?
I'm not aware of it.
No, sir.
I don't think so. I, I think that's something that ought to be on here, that we ought to show some...
Some effort.
Movement, yeah. Use that money to improve.
I would definitely agree with that, and I think what we're gonna need is some guidelines or criteria for how that money is to be spent. I mean, and maybe a, you know, a committee that oversees that.
So...
I don't need any more trees than my property.
So, so along that line, maybe that's what Director Lloyd means by this administrative or process, is it?
Yes.
Maybe the process block, something like that, where you outline guidelines, and we can kind of propose something like that.
Well, one thing I would wanna point out, thank you, we, we have some technology advancements going on internally right now anyway, that you probably aren't aware of, and, and as these things sort of come our way, and they're gonna be applicable to the planning arena, sure wanna expose you to what we have, to the extent you might have interest, have, you know, the IT person or somebody come in and, and help and explain that, but I also wanna show you how that fits into the, the real planning process, you know, what we do sort of behind this scene, i- i- if you have interest in that. As a matter of fact, I'll go another step. If any of you have any interest in maybe tagging along with, with, you know, a building inspector or something to see kind of how that part of the process goes, that might be something that we could work out too. It's something I'm trying to work on, to have the staff who's involved in this become familiar with what's going on out there, that, you know, they're issuing permits all day long, but they really don't know what, what's going on or what happens, and no fault of their own, just, you know, hasn't, the opportunity hasn't come up, but those are the kinds of things that help with that interface to the customer and people. They know what's going on out there, and they, they maybe have a different perspective. So it's things like that, and the same with you. If you have interest in some of these things, and we can facilitate them, happy to help try to find a way to make that work. So, please.
We all can have ideas, but what's the process, or is there any input into the township from our resident base in terms of the things that they would like to see that, that don't exist now? Short of we getting a survey, you know, go out there, is there any of that kind of data that exists right now?
Yeah, your master plan has a lot of that in it, from the previous analysis, sure. It's reflected in your master plans historically, yep.
But that's been a couple of years since we really looked at it hard.
Been quite a while, five years.
My second point is, does the township still retain our former planning consultants to any extent?
No, and on as-needed basis, if we needed them.
Well, the only reason I ask that is Jill, on, on tons, would come and report to us something that she's learned or they've done in some other township.
Right.
You know, that we, that we... You know, that we should consider. So that was always a, an area that we could get some information, or thoughts that try to, do we want to do that or not do that? So, that's why I asked, do we still retain them in any form or fashion? And I don't know if, if they're willing to continue on a, you know, on a free gratis kind of thing.
Oh, no. Nobody would do that.
Well, I-
No.
There should be some loyalty from that.
It's not going to happen that way.
Not everybody's like me.
I'm probably as close to that as you're going to get, sir.
Well, it just, it was just a stream of good input, that's all.
Absolutely. And that's another good point about what this would be intended to do. And that is, if you look at that kind of beige colored block, it says legislative, and then the other one says process. The legislative is bringing those current and updated, you know, advancements in planning, what folks are doing, new ordinances, issues that are out there. A lot of times you'll find that in your magazines. But when new legislation is passed that is going to affect us, we're going to be, I will be responsible, and I will be bringing that. My idea here was that if somebody wanted to be a part of a legislative group, a committee of some sort, happy to facilitate that and make it happen. That's just a matter of interest. And it's the same with short-term planning, or, as I was saying before, the processes. So, you know, we have a few areas where we could kind of bring some folks out. Clearly, there's going to be things that we're doing with the master planning, and with ordinances, and with everything else that everybody's going to need to be involved with. But if there's some interest that folks have, and availability, too. Sir?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Lloyd. You know, one of the ways, I know the MAP conference is coming up here very soon. And for a number of years, we sent some members to that, but then when times were tough, we stopped that. And I know a couple of members went this last year, a year ago. And in my times that I attended that, I learned a lot by interacting and attending a lot of things of best practice kinds of things that other municipalities were doing. And I found that very good. Are you going to be attending the MAP conference?
I'm waiting to see kind of who's going. The only person that's going is Joe so far, so I probably will go. Simply because there's availability, you know. I was just waiting to see who else was going to go on our commute.
Joe did volunteer, okay.
Yeah. And there's room for two more, a couple more commissioners, if you're interested. I think we've sent information out a couple of times now.
It's coming up very soon.
Yeah, I just was trying to remember precisely what are the dates? I know I've gotten it, but very frankly, I wasn't certain if there was any funding for that. I assumed you would be going for sure.
I was waiting to see what the commission was going to do.
But I know that, as I said, in past times, we learned a great deal from interacting with our peers, as well as attending the various seminars that were put on. And they, I, the times that I went, I came back thinking, boy, this was well worth my time.
September 20th.
September 20th through the 22nd.
20th through the 22nd.
Yeah.
I would think you should plan on going regardless of who from the commission.
Grand Rapids.
Oh, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, well, that's why.
Yeah, I, my brother lives in Grand, I'm planning on staying there, so I'm all set.
Is there anybody else who's planning?
I was going to just ask, is there anyone?
I'm going to be out at 10:00.
Want to go?
Yeah, this year's not working out.
If I look at my calendar, I can't speak right now.
Sure.
I would be interested in going, just as long as I don't have any conflicts or anything like that.
Okay.
Because as I said, I, it's not like it's a day at the amusement park. I can tell you, I'm very serious. I mean, there is, there's some great information that you get in the learning experience. I'm repeating myself, but attending a number of the sessions that they have, and just interacting with your peers from other townships or cities, and what they're doing, and what are they doing on their master plans?
Right. And their, the scale is, you know, from zero to 100 on what folks are doing with regards to master plan?
Yeah.
I'd be interested to go if my schedule allows.
Okay, so when would you know? You just need to let us know?
Couple days.
Okay.
Yeah, I can probably let you know first of the week.
Okay. Now, if you're planning on doing, you know, like the overnight thing, if that's your intention, let us know soon. Because I know we had a heck of a time getting hotels.
Oh, okay.
So just know that. And once, if you do let us know, we'll, as a matter of fact, I'll ask Maria to start calling tomorrow and see what might be available from a hotel standpoint. Because that started to become the issue when we got past that early registration point and sent, when we were sending information out. But we're still happy to help and make that happen for you.
You bet.
So-
So I guess I would volunteer for helping to figure out what we can do with trees, because I don't know what we're going to be allowed to do from a, you know, a county standpoint. Where can we actually plant them? Because I think we're not currently allowed to plant them on private property, as I understand it.
Right, we couldn't just go out and do it. That's true.
Could we make trees available at a discount for, for private property owners? And I think tree maintenance is one of the things we need to look at, too.
Got your second volunteer.
I know we have an expert.
Yes.
Well, let me, let me kind of get myself back on here to make sure that I'm helping you understand this, my thinking. What I, what I realize we're going to need to do is, is to spend, I'll take a deeper dive on these issues and kind of break these out. What I was hoping to do is maybe have a little more feedback with regards to the items. But you've given me good information tonight that I can look up and have probably available tomorrow, and put that together and send it out. What I'd like to do, and Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll lean on you. I'd like to work with you, because I need to bounce some ideas off somebody here. And, you know, over, you know, maybe putting together an agenda coming up so that we could, you know, kind of get into these things and flush it out a little bit, and have it make sense. So, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to maybe get with you between now and the end of the following week, if you think you're available for an hour or so. And maybe we can kind of hash this out, and then get some information out to the entire group. I should have that information that we're talking about now from the work you did before available. We can maybe put that in an order that you know and understand makes some sense, that you think will make sense to the group, and we'll start pushing that stuff out and moving it along. But I do want to back up just a little bit. You're right, there'd be current planning things, short-term, like the tree ordinance and things of that nature, the advanced planning legislative, as we mentioned, and then the process work. This could be in any number of other ways, or it doesn't have to be any of these. It's really up to this group, but it's been a, this work program was a truly beneficial effort that we engaged in when I was in Ann Arbor. We had a group of great planning commissioners, not unlike we have here, who wanted to get involved and stay involved, and help with, you know, these different tasks. And it was a realization that that's what we needed to do. So, you know, if that's what this commission would like to do, and you're willing to work on putting together a couple of committees, then that should work out great, and we should be able to move a couple of projects of this nature forward.
Some of this I could see maybe just from an educational standpoint, can you tell us what's the latest that's going on with medical marijuana?
Right, sure. That's the legislative side.
Yeah.
Keeping you guys updated on the most recent legislation that's going to affect us with regards to planning, sure.
So that we know that, well, we better do something.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Those kinds of things. And, you know, and of course, David Laddie would be involved in it. It would seem to me that, you know, someone who had some legal background might be really good on this legislative group, you know what I mean? So there's lots of different ways that we-
Wish we knew someone like that.
If you hear of anybody, you know. But there's probably plenty to go around, and I'm not looking to drown myself, and I'm sure not going to pass all this off on anybody. It's just going to be, you know, some extra work that's out there that we really need to be doing. And, you know, we're not going to spend $10,000 each time to go get it done.
Get focused, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to have some focus points that we can do. And hopefully that becomes something that, that we all get something out of. You know, there's education parts of this, there's learning, there's, you know, benefit, there's communication, and heaven forbid, getting to know each other a little better. So I personally look forward to all of this, and I realize it's not very organized right now, but it will be. And, you know, that's the idea, is to get it out in front of you and see if there is interest. If so, we can move these forward. And if these-
What suggests, I typically work from home on Fridays, so maybe next Friday we can do it.
Let's do that, thank you. I'll get something out to you probably tomorrow on that. Is there a time of day that works best? Early riser?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, then I'll do that. And we'll start working on those things. And I'll, I'll pull that information, I'll send that information back out to you guys, too, in its raw form, that I, whatever I get it in, you know, as far as the stuff that you guys put together. And then that'll give you guys something to start to chomp on, too, and I'm going to work on that. And, you know, Al, I'd like to let folks know a little bit about, and there is another element of some of this, that the process things, if you will, there's, there's an element of that, that I believe, and Al, you may want to jump in on this, but I do know that there's some interest in trying to do some benchmarking and looking at Grand Blank Township comparatively speaking. And Al, I don't know if you wanted to expand on that, but I know that that's something that Al wanted to look at, and I'm supportive of. And there may be some benefits of what we're doing there that could help with our master planning and other efforts as well.
So, this would be my contribution to the committee reports, Township Board. So, yes, there are two strategic initiatives that I'm involved with on behalf of the board. I'm just a member of the, kind of like a subcommittees. One of them has to do with planning and zoning, and the other one is attractiveness of businesses and retail. And what Director Lloyd was referring to was the planning and zoning piece of it, in which we're budgeting some modest amount of money next year to go out and to help us do some benchmarking with other townships of our size, trying to understand, you know, what their big priorities are in terms of their planning and zoning, and just trying to kind of see how we stack up against them. So, it's always good to have data like that. You know, not that that's a be-all and end-all, but it does help us understand how we compare to others. And it will, I think, you know, with the development-ready activity that we're trying to get going here, that'll help as well to see how we stack up against, against peer townships. So that's just, just one element of a strategic-
Yeah, I think we have a kind of a general feeling, but it's good to get the data.
Good to get, it's good to have data. And the other initiative is the business attractiveness for retail and restaurants. And we always hear, we always hear from the citizens, the residents, about how we should kind of build that in our, in our area here. And so, there's some money being reserved to go out and do some listening to residents, listening to our current business, and listening to people kind of from outside the township area about what we could do, about what they, you know, their expectations are, their needs. So we can try and fold that into a, to master plan, and fold that into ordinance and other, you know, the aspects the township's involved in.
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Mansour. Several years ago, I was a board representative to the Genesee Colony Planning. I don't know the right name anymore, but I used to go down once a month or so and to the, down in Flint, where they had the meeting, and then come back and provide a detailed report to the board. And there was always a lot of discussion and actions that they were communicating to us. I mean, to us, the township, and I as a representative would, is that still going on?
So, the activity is called the Metropolitan Planning Alliance. And I happen to be assigned that duty as well, on behalf of the Township Board. So I go to the monthly meetings around the 15th each month. I would have to say that I, for the last two years, I haven't found that group to be as deliberative as you seem to recall it. It seems to be more of a confirmation of whatever staff has come up with at the county, at the county level, in terms of projects that they want to work on, allocations of money, that kind of thing. And again, there is not, honestly, virtually no discussion amongst any of the township representatives that are sent there, and from cities, you know, Grand Blank City and others as well. It just kind of rolls through. So, it is a good, good place to get information of things that are going to happen, which I convey to the board in my monthly report. You know, things like recycle day, things like what projects are going to get allocated, maybe road projects that are in the township area, the Dorit Highway Extension, for instance, those kind of things. But in terms of feeding forward, feeding up of expectations, that really has not been a, something they've been, been a big part of that, that meeting.
Do you have anything else to add to your committee report?
Nope, just happy to, just happy to say that I met with Director Lloyd on those two initiatives that I met with, and happy to have him, you know, step in and pull those in, his leadership in, as well as the master plan. So, that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions for Mr. Mansour? If not, Mr. Lloyd, did you have anything else from planning and zoning standpoint? Well, just want to point out the, the Ally Challenge is coming up this next week, folks. So, get out there and try to enjoy that if you can. Hopefully, it's going to be hugely successful. I'll tell you right now, one thing that I've heard is there's ticket sales, I think for Friday, which is the concert day, too. They're up there, 10, 10,000 or so, pre-sales, you know, in that neighborhood, which is good. So, you know, that number's not bad. I don't know how it compares to what we might have done through the Buick Open on a regular basis, but that's a good number. And so that'll be a bit of a challenge for, you know, managing this. But we got great folks, the police, fire, everybody who's involved, even code enforcement, the building departments out there doing their inspections. It's really pretty impressive. There's a lot of support and enthusiasm from folks here. I want to say thank you to Mr. Saab, who's in the audience. I know he's listening intently. I do the monthly report. I did send my monthly report out to everybody as well. I think you might even have a hard copy before you. It just went out electronically also today. That just gives everybody an update on some of the things going on in the planning, building, and code enforcement arenas. And you all have your GBT sticker, and I do have one for you, sir, so please don't leave without it tonight. And that's it.
Mr. Lloyd, if I may, the Ally Challenge is a huge, huge thing for the township, and everyone's very excited about it. It is tempting sometimes to make comparisons to the Buick Open. But I think we ought to think about it a little differently, because Ally Challenge is a senior event, and it's not like, you know, a young PGA tour. So, doing things like 10,000 sales, I mean, that is, I mean, that's really outstanding. And so, just, we just ought to kind of calibrate ourselves, you know, to this, to this event. So I think we're, I think everyone's really weighing in and doing a great job. And volunteers, I know the schools are participating, providing volunteers, especially for the 17th hole. So, everyone's, everyone wants that concessions. They want to work the concessions for that, for that hole. But anyway, that's a, that's a great event. Thanks.
Well, I think if you go out there, there's going to be a lot of names that you recognize compared to the current tour.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of people, you're like, who is this guy?
Right.
That's up at the top of the leaderboard.
I, I think for, for people with, with a little bit of whiskers, it's going to be an awesome event.
Okay, Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
It's really been quite silent up in the zone, Board of Appeals. There's something coming up, but that's-
Feast or famine. We have four coming up in September.
So next month, we'll have report.
Site plan review standpoint, we had two items that we looked at in the last month. One was the Subaru that we did a preliminary review on. And then the other was McLaren came before us for a couple modifications. It was mostly for, they needed some additional parking.
Well, they wanted to utilize their banked parking spaces, so they wanted to bring that out of storage, and then they added a few spaces, I think 30 extra spaces.
Does anyone know the census of that building? Census? How many people work there?
Can find out very fast.
By the way, we've been invited, if anyone's interested to take a tour of the building by McLaren.
Has that been scheduled?
No, they just, at the site plan review meeting, they just said, if there's any interest, let us know, and we'll, you know.
We can coordinate something. If there's interest on this commission, and I'm seeing a couple of nods, what- If there's interest on this commission, and I'm seeing a couple of nods, what I can do is maybe get a date or two from them, and then push it out to you guys and see who might be able to make it. My understanding, and I haven't been in there since I did the final walkthrough, but things weren't all set up, it was still a few pieces left, but it's a pretty nice building, and what they were talking about, there's a lot of things in there that I haven't even seen yet, so it should be a great tour.
Yeah, if you could.
I will.
Contact them.
All right.
It would be helpful, I think, I think the members of the Township Board would be very interested in that as well, if we could coordinate something like that. And also, just on the radar, when the Magna Building off on Holly Road is completed, I think that that would be a $50 million project, that it would be awesome to be able to take a look at that.
With that, we're, the plan there is to have quite a grand opening. We've already talked to them, that's an important part of what we, I hope, will really begin to do in earnest around here on a regular basis, so yeah, thanks for bringing that point up.
Chairman, to Mr. Lloyd, I know I see Fairfield Inn is really come along, I think they've got pretty much all of the brick on the building, so it looks like they're getting kind of near completion. The owner of all of those franchises, he's been in, I just can't remember his name, maybe you guys, to site plan review, and he had mentioned something in passing regarding Hilton, and we talked about him coming back to us with a campus kind of process for a, I just drew a blank, help me, guys.
For the Hilton?
For the Hilton, to include it into.
Two, as they call it.
Plant.
Into the plant.
PUD.
PUD, thank you, I just drew, I was having a brain freeze there. Have you gotten any comeback with them at all on that?
Well, since the last site plan review, where they brought their concept to the site plan review committee, the site plan review committee was pretty comfortable with the overall scheme of things, and so things have trickled back in from them to respond to the comments from the site plan review committee, and to prepare themselves to get on a planning commission agenda.
Okay.
So it is, they are moving the item forward, they know that they'll come back before the site plan review committee, at least that's what they've asked, and then go to the planning commission. My thought though, is I thought the site plan review committee was generally pretty good with everything.
Yeah, there were some issues, I think, that they had to solve.
So.
The PUD.
It's moving.
Yeah, the PUD would really offer them some, a little more latitude from different aspects of a campus kind of setting there.
Right.
And that's what I was wondering, whether that did strike a note with them or not.
Yeah, they're moving forward. It's just slowly trickling, and there's an awful lot of background that they have to do there.
Oh, yeah.
Attorneys putting, you know, the revised agreement together and all that, so it's happening, I mean, they're spending money to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bandersky.
To the commission, I brought in a picture of the cell tower, the 190-foot cell tower that we approved, and.
Where are the branches at?
Yes, it would be good maybe to pull out what drawings we were given and compare to this.
Okay.
Because that looks awful sparse.
Spars, yeah. It's not the big redwood, it was, oh, looked like it was going to be at the beginning. We did palm trees when I was in California, those actually looked pretty good, because, you know, just a straight up bowl. They're not too bad.
The first time when I drove by there and happened to see that, I went, what? I couldn't believe it. I went, that's not what I had in mind at all, that we agreed on.
That's not what I had in mind either when I approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a good thing if you could dig that out to send it out to us.
Just give that, give that to them.
I thought it was going down here.
Yeah, that lights up, that's just an artificial tree that they put on the top of that.
We approve that, that way, we ask that the tree be put up.
Well, live and learn.
Yes.
Right? A great effort.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bandersky.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky to adjourn the meeting, support by Mr. Mansour. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, anybody still wants to? Motion passes 7-0, we are adjourned at 8:18 PM. Thank you.